17:00 PM and the State Board of Education is returning to open session. A quorum of the board is present. Regular meeting of the State Board of Education is reconvened. Ms. Evans, are there individuals who wish to address the board during today's meeting?
Yes, there are people who have registered to provide public comment today, and I will review the rules. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes to address the board, and I will keep track of time. We will be strictly following the time limit so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. Please finish your sentence and end your comment when the timer goes off. Thank you for your cooperation. It is the practice of the board not to respond to comments during the public participation portion of the meeting. We will maintain an atmosphere of respect for all people. Any person disrespecting anyone by name or otherwise will be asked to cease. Public participation will occur in person and virtually. We will begin with the persons that are physically in the room with us today and then move to those in the queue online. In the room today, we have Bree Morgenberg. Go ahead and come up to the table.
Forgot again how big these chairs are.
And whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Thank you. Boundaries. We teach our children boundaries to protect themselves. As parents, we set boundaries to protect our children. So what are boundaries? They are limits created to prevent harm between self, in this case, our children, and another, knowing what is not yours and knowing what is yours. That is a boundary. Boundaries are necessary to improve capabilities, promote autonomy, decrease stress, improve emotional health, improve relationships, and even ward off burnout. While I believe you all fully understand the physical boundaries of children, you need to cleanse your lenses to see the conceptual boundaries that you are crossing. Adults crossing boundaries. The majority of this Board of Education, as well as administration and staff of many schools, are not only regularly crossing boundaries but encouraging others to cross boundaries of students and families. Boundaries including religion, sexuality, sex, sex education, literature, social functions, political ideology, and family creed. And what happens when boundaries are crossed? Exactly what is happening right now in our public schools. Decreased capabilities, loss of autonomy, increased stress, destroyed emotional health, loss of relationships, and massive burnout. You are responsible, your recommendations, your decisions, your discrimination. I can't believe I have to say it. Stop. Stop crossing boundaries, including to our homeschool children. Stop blaming homeschools' parents saying that kids might not be safe at home. Get real. Parents are leaving because you are not safe for their children in school. Parents do not frivolously decide to lose income and change their lifestyle to teach their children because they want to abuse them. Rather, they do so to protect them from you and indoctrination. As a Michigan Republican Party State Committee Woman that is also the Vice Chair of the Issues Committee, I am pleased to inform you that not only do parents want homeschool protected, but so do thousands and thousands of others. Recently, the Issues Committee has passed their position on protecting parental rights in homeschool. This was necessary because you are making it political and you are dividing schools, and again, you are crossing boundaries. In the mentioned MRP issues passed position, all will be able to read facts, including that, quote, "Michigan ranks 43rd in literacy and 34th in math," unquote. So stop gaslighting us. Stop complicating it. You can choose to dig your heels in deeper, or you can respect boundaries. With respect, you can create a learning environment for all to flourish. I leave you with this. What are your priorities on this board? Do you have priorities that benefit education when you cross boundaries with our money and, most importantly, our children? Thank you.
Thank you so much. We will go to the caller online. Hello, caller, can you hear me?
Hello.
Hello. If you could please state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your three minutes of public comment.
Danielle Crozak, and I'm calling from Oxford, Michigan.
Thank you. You may begin when you're ready.
Okay. Hello, everyone. Danielle Crozak. I am the parent of an Oxford High School student that survived the mass shooting on November 30th, 2021. I was present and spoke at the April 9th Board of Education meeting, providing insight into the ongoing trauma in the Oxford community and reinforcing the need for state intervention, support, and leadership. I understand now that in November of '23, the State Board of Education dismissed the school safety proposal, calling for stricter training and accountability for school employees and administrators. Those who opposed the resolution signaled they were still committed to taking steps to improve safety and are open to taking up the proposal at a later date. However, as forward to April 9th, a board member proposed to include an Oxford Call to Action resolution on the agenda for discussion, and the majority of the board refused, citing the need for more time to research and discuss, or suggesting to include in the legislative committee meeting. It has been 893 days since the shooting. How much more time is needed? The May 2 legislative committee, with no mention of this Oxford Call to Action, nothing even on the agenda today. Again, how much more time is needed? It was clear to me during that April 9th meeting, no one at the table had taken the time to really read the Guideposts Report, nor was anyone familiar with the EOP laws. After the meeting, I took it upon myself to send a follow-up email to every single board member here, which included the link to the Guideposts Report, outlining the district's failure, the EOP law, American School Counselor Code of Ethics, and a link to the Claire Davis Act in Colorado, which serves as a successful example of legislation carving out immunity. Despite requesting a follow-up and welcoming a conversation, I did not receive not one single response, not even an acknowledgement of receipt. I am aware of and in full support of a proposed discussion with victims' families scheduled for later this month. However, lack of response to any Oxford community member over the last two and a half years is unacceptable. Silence speaks volumes. Under Michigan law, the State of Michigan Board of Education has the ultimate responsibility for school district operations, including education of students, ensuring safety and welfare, managing the property. Board responsibilities were established by the 1963 state constitution, and its members are expected to lead. Its members are expected to lead improvements, recommendations, and legislative actions. Cannot lead if you continue to deflect having these conversations with those impacted. It has been 893 days since the Oxford shooting and tragedy.
Thank you, caller.
The foster parents in the Oxford community have repeatedly asked for you to lead or simply respond.
Thank you, caller, for your public comment today. Mike, are there any other persons who have preregistered for public comment today?
There is nobody else.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment.
Thank you, Board. It's 1:25. May I please have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and committee of the whole meeting of April 9th, 2024? Thank you, Ms. Tilly, for moving. Do we have a second on that? Ms. Lipton, a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Pass.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Board, may I please have a motion to approve the minutes of the Legislative Committee meeting of May 7, 2024? Dr. Pritchett, thank you for moving it. Do we have a second?
Sorry.
Second from Senator Bullock. Is there any discussion associated therewith? Hearing none. If we could do a roll call vote, please.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Pass.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Board, the next item on the agenda at 1:26 PM is a presentation on summer nutrition programs, the role of three key nutrition programs to keep Michigan kids fed all summer. Starting next month, students ages 18 and younger across Michigan will now have up to three opportunities to have access to meals while school is out. This presentation will outline all three. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Diane Golzinski, Deputy Superintendent, Division of Business, Health, and Library Services; Ms. Melanie Drummler, Interim Assistant Director in the Office of Nutrition Services. While our presenters gather, I would like to introduce a new staff member to the department. Dr. Deanne Kelleher joined our Office of Nutrition Services team yesterday as the new Child Nutrition Director. Dr. Kelleher comes to us from Michigan State University, Go Green.
Go White.
Where she taught community nutrition to future dietitians. Dr. Kelleher, could you stand? Thank you very much. Give her a big round of applause. Presenters, to you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board. Thank you for allowing me back at the table this afternoon. As Dr. Rice said, we're going to talk about three key summer nutrition programs that we're very proud to be sharing with the students of Michigan as we move into the summer months. So we'll start first with a summer food service program overview. Summer Food Service Program is the traditional summer food service program that we have had in Michigan for a good number of years. We know it as the Meet Up and Eat Up Summer Food Service Program. You may have seen signs around the state titled Meet Up and Eat Up. That is the branding that we use to get kids to a site. These are free, highly nutritious meals when school is out. Children must be 18 years of age or under, except for adults ages 19 to 26 who have a mental or physical disability and who are enrolled in a public or private nonprofit school program during the school year. The Summer Food Service Program, except for during a pandemic, the Summer Food Service Program operates when school is not in session. It is federally funded but administered here by us at MDE, and it is meant to supplement other summer programs and activities. These sites are located in low-income areas around the state. The meal must be eaten on-site, which is known as congregate feeding, and a site can get reimbursed for up to two meals per day for each eligible child that chooses to eat at their location. We typically have around 370 summer food service sponsors every year. That can be schools, it can be nonprofits, local governments, and it can be camps. What we know is that the summer food service sites do not meet the needs of every child in the state of Michigan, because it is difficult for a young child who cannot drive to get themselves to a site to get meals. And so if they are at home and do not have an adult to get them to a site, these sites may not be of use for getting them to those meals. So as a result of all of the work that our team and the USDA did during the pandemic, we have two new programs that we are standing up to help get kids fed during the summer. Melanie?
Thank you, Dr. Golzinski. Okay, so I'm going to start out by talking about the Rural Noncongregate Summer Food Service Program. That is the first of two new programs that we are rolling out this summer. So in December of 2023, as part of the Consolidated Appropriations Act, the United States Department of Agriculture released an interim final rule, which included these two new programs. The Rural Noncongregate, the purpose is to serve in rural areas multiple meals at one time. This new flexibility will allow for sites to not do congregate meals and that they can offer up to seven days' worth of meals at one time. And all program sponsors are eligible to be reimbursed for up to two meals per day per child. And with this program, USDA released a map, and I am happy to say that most of Michigan is eligible to participate in this Rural Noncongregate program. So prior to that final rule being released in December, USDA had a pilot year, and we did opt to participate in that pilot year last summer of 2023, and it was a very successful year. We had over 44 sponsors who operated 64 sites throughout the state of Michigan and served approximately 1.3 million meals. Overall, last summer, we had approximately 4.3 million meals in the Summer Food Service Program. And so Rural Noncongregate accounted for 31% of the meals that we offered through the Summer Food Service Program last summer. As our Summer Food Service Team continues to plan for this upcoming summer, we have had increased interest in this additional flexibility, and we definitely are looking forward to helping sponsors navigate and implement this in their areas. And as of yesterday, we have over 90 sponsors that have filled out our form for interest, and that will be almost 160 new, not new sites, because some of them were there last year, but 160 sites that will offer Rural Noncongregate this coming summer. Okay, so the third program is our Summer Electronic Benefits Transfer, or what I'm going to call Summer EBT from here on out in the presentation. So there are many reasons why we are committed to participating in Summer EBT beginning this summer. The first and most important is that we have an estimated 836 million students, I'm sorry, thousand, that'd be a lot of people, sorry, getting ahead of myself there, 836,000 eligible students and families that can benefit from this program this coming summer. As we all know, during the summer, when schools are not in session, food insecurities that our students face gets worse. When they don't have access to those school meals, it gets worse, as Diane said. So Summer EBT, it supports Goal Three of Michigan's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan, which is to improve the health, safety, and wellness of all learners. So the overview of Summer EBT. So throughout COVID, the pandemic EBT, which hopefully you've all heard of, that program helped to make sure that kids had additional food resources, and it ended up being the model for now what is Summer EBT. USDA actually just officially approved Michigan to implement Summer EBT, and the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services is the lead agency on this program, but MDE is considered a partner agency along with the Center for Education Performance and Information. So this program allows eligible students to receive $40 per summer month if they have been identified as eligible for free and reduced-price meals through some systems that we have in place called direct certification, categorically, categorical eligibility, and then the paper application process that happens in schools. So our partnership with SEPI, we will be providing the data from the Michigan Student Data System. Several of the collections will be used from the Michigan Student Data System, and that data will then be sent over to MDHHS, and they will use that to deliver the benefits out to the eligible students. So one big change with Summer EBT compared to how pandemic EBT worked is that students in community eligibility provisioned schools were all eligible for the program, for pandemic EBT. That is not the case with Summer EBT. With Summer EBT, students in community eligibility provisioned schools, they have to be directly certified, categorically eligible, or the household has to complete an education benefits form. And then the data from that form is reported to SEPI through the Michigan Student Data System. There are a couple new things with Summer EBT as well, that bottom information there. If there are school-aged children that are not participating in a national school lunch program, but they are on assistance programs through the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, like food assistance or TANF, they can be eligible as long as they're in what USDA has considered school ages. So in the state of Michigan, it's ages of 6 to 18. One other thing that's really important as we are partnering for Summer EBT is DHHS. We know that this year, being the first year, the data, getting schools to make sure that all the data's in there, and that really starts with the parents filling out the forms, there is a safety net, and that is MDHHS will have an application process that they're going to roll out within the next month, so that if there are students that are newly eligible for free and reduced-price meals, but it's the end of the school year, they can contact MDHHS directly and fill out an application and potentially receive the benefits. One other thing I'd like to say, that it occurred to me yesterday, is our Summer Food Service Program. As Diane said, we've had it here in Michigan for a number of years. Actually, prior to 2004, it was run by the USDA. In 2004, we graciously accepted the administration of the Summer Food Service Program, and it happens to be 20 years. And I will say, in that first year, when we took over the program, we had between 30 and 40 sponsors. So the fact that we're up to over 370 sponsors and 4.3 million meals a year is huge, and it really is a testament to all of the staff that have worked on Summer Food Service Program the last 20 years. And so, I guess, happy birthday, happy anniversary. We love summer food.
What questions can we answer?
Thank you, presenters, very much. Board members' questions? Dr. Pritchett.
Thank you. The first program you talked about, Summer Food Service Program, SFSP, what would we do without academics? Anyways, it's my understanding that, and I understand those are onsite, but it can be a student who may be 10 years old and visiting grandma but lives in Kentucky, just happens to be visiting for a couple weeks. They are eligible.
Yep, absolutely correct.
Correct. As long as they go to whatever the facility is, okay? What, how is, for the next program, then, how is rural area defined? Or are those predefined and what MDE considers or the Department of?
It's predefined by the USDA.
Okay.
Like I said, there is a map that USDA has released, they released it a couple months ago. Fortunately, pretty much the entire state of Michigan is green. There are some pockets that are considered urban and not rural. We, Brian, do you have anything to add?
There are about four or five different layers of geographical census information that compile to that map, and so we're pretty confident that it's covering any area within the state of Michigan that might be considered rural. We're really excited to be able to extend that eligibility this year.
Yeah. And the last program, the EBT program, so paperwork has to be filled out by the parent, or if they are currently free and reduced lunch, would that just be an automatic for them?
Yes. So if they are directly certified for free or reduced-priced lunch, if they are in one of those categorically eligible foster, migrant, that type of thing, or if the family fills out the application. So as long as the child falls into one of those three categories, they would qualify for the program. The challenge with what you said was that, as Melanie was saying, we have some buildings that are community eligibility provisioned where everyone's eating for free. So we can't necessarily say just because a child is eating for free, they would qualify. They have to fall into one of those buckets.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Other board members? Ms. Lipton?
So on slide number two, for the, just the overview, the, is that two meals, breakfast, lunch?
Yes.
Generally speaking?
Yeah, go ahead. Generally speaking, yes. Sites can opt to do breakfast, lunch, they can do breakfast, dinner, they can do breakfast and a snack, lunch and a snack, snack and a dinner. The only combination they can't do is lunch and dinner.
Okay.
So.
Okay, so it's two meals, you know, roughly, okay. And then for the, I just had a question about just logistically how the EBT program works. Does that just works like a cash card or?
So it will be.
Some sort of transfer to the parent's bank account or something like that?
Nope. So, bridge cards?
Okay.
They are using the same exact bridge card. If a student is in a household that's already on a food assistance program, the benefit will actually just be added right to that account already.
Okay.
All other students that are just maybe eligible because their parent completed an application in their school this year will receive a card in the mail later this summer.
And when you look at the number of students, or do you see any significant drop-off in terms of the amount of meals that you're providing over the summer and during the school year?
Yeah.
And if so, do you have any thoughts on, A, why, what's the cause of the drop-off? And are there any creative ways that we might think about solving that?
Yeah, so you may remember that I said that part of the challenge with the traditional Summer Food Service Program is that congregate requirement. So we knew that we had over 370 different sponsors who had thousands of locations, but we still weren't able to get to every child because not every child could physically get to a location. So that's one of the biggest challenges that we have in the summer, which is why we're so excited about these two additional programs. The ability to have Rural Noncongregate, where families can go pick up the meals and take them home for seven days at a time, certainly assists families. But then those who don't have access to that may then have access to the Summer EBT program. So we're hoping that the three of them together provide that net to help the children get through the summer months while they're waiting to get back to the Michigan school meals program.
And so that's the seven meals at a time, that might, I mean, I've heard of programs where you sort of load prepackaged meals like into a backpack or something like that so that, so that the family actually can go. And are there challenges in terms of transportation or getting the parents to those sites or what have you? I mean, and they're not delivered to the house, presumably.
Correct.
Is that a?
Yes.
Difficult challenge for?
Transportation can be a challenge. That's one of the reasons for the program, so that a family can go once a week to get seven days' worth of meals versus having to go every day and stay and sit and watch the child eat in the congregate meal service. So that is one of the hopes, and I think it is why the counts were up so high last summer in our rural areas, because, you know, having to drive into town maybe 20 miles, depending on where you live in the state.
Right, this may help to at least alleviate some of that. That's great, thank you.
Other board members, thank you, Ms. Lipton, other board members.
Can I say?
Please.
So what was it that you said that gets put on the bridge card, the funds, electronic funds?
Yeah, so with Summer EBT, it's $40 a month per child, per eligible child. And so for a student that's already part of a household that's receiving the food assistance program through MDHHS, they are just going to load that $40 per month onto that family's bridge account.
Yeah. But is there any, I mean, is there any way to know whether they use it for food or nutritious food or food for that child or anything?
Yeah, that is a question for DHHS. I know they can track things, but I'm not sure they can get that detailed.
Well, not for that child, but I mean, you wouldn't know that if they brought food home either, so. But as far as what they're buying it, you know, I don't know the range of things. It can be non-healthy, or is it all healthy? Or I guess, healthy is a relative term, so. We just don't know exactly what they're buying with that $40 bucks. Okay.
We don't.
Well, they can't buy like cigarettes and things like that.
Right.
They can only purchase.
Could be high-sugar stuff, I don't know.
Yeah, they could.
Okay.
It's still choice.
Thank you, Ms. McMillan. Other questions? Tell us a little bit about the history of noncongregate meals. Couple, three sentences, yeah.
Yeah, so noncongregate, I mean, it really came out of the pandemic. When we flipped school meals on March 13th, 2020, to, it was a different, it was a summer food service version of how we feed kids. But when we flipped the switch literally overnight, that was the birth of noncongregate as we know it now. So, and in the four years, USDA, working with state agency partners across the country, have, you know, evolved the rules and kind of came to a universal, this is, you know, how it should look, but it allows for parents to. but it allows for parents to, or, you know, not even parents, guardians, whoever it might be, to go to a site and pick up a reimbursable meal. So it has to meet, there's a meal pattern with the summer food service program, and the food that they provide has to be, whatever the package looks like, every meal there, it has to meet the meal pattern for the day, so.
So it's got a four, it's got a four-year history. And it, it grew out of the necessity of the pandemic. It grew out of needing to feed people in the pandemic. And this is one of those, you know, unusual silver linings of the pandemic, that we, we learned some things about feeding and about flexibility in feeding people, particularly, not exclusively, but particularly in rural jurisdictions, that we've now applied moving forward. Okay, all right, thank you very much. Anything more, board members, for the good of the group? Once, twice, thrice? You? Beth Robinson, Ms. Tilly? I want to thank Brian Van Dorn for his contribution. Thank you so much, we appreciate you. And we appreciate the, the entire Nutrition Services Office staff. You're doing one enormous job, and a growing job. And it's good that business is good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, at 1:48, we are going to hear our 45-minute presentation from the State Board President.
I'll try and see if I can make it 45 seconds. But I, just really quickly, because I know Dr. Rice will be picking up on two of the items that I would mention. One is, we heard from a parent from Oxford on the, on the line during public comment, and as, you know, we will repeatedly state is that child safety and health is something I know is important to every board member here at this table. And the parents of Oxford, we definitely want to make sure that we are hearing from them and in whatever way we can help to address the concerns in making sure that we are providing safe spaces for children across the state of Michigan as well, and especially addressing the concerns of those parents. And we'll hear more from Dr. Rice on that. You know, I think at the end of the day, last meeting, we were very clear that we wanted to make sure we provided some space to do that, and Dr. Rice has, has provided that opportunity. School visits, had the opportunity to tag along with Dr. Rice in Flint, Michigan, and we went to Eisenhower Elementary. And I finished one book, and the students actually wanted me to read another book. So I was really excited that I read well enough and animated enough that they wanted to hear my voice again. And we also went to Southwestern and Classic Academy, where I was able to catch a part of a conversation that Dr. Rice had started previously in hearing from students. So I will pause there, not quite 45 minutes, but that's what I have for today.
That's a, that's a good thing, thank you, Madam President. So, report of the, the state soup. I, I want to thank the teachers in the room, and by extension, the 100,000 teachers who aren't in the room right now. As last week was Teacher Appreciation Week. It was a busy week of honoring teachers and other educators and of appreciating what our educators do to support and teach our children each and every day. I had the pleasure of being in several school districts last week. Our board president, Dr. Pugh, mentioned that Tuesday morning, we were in Flint, in Eisenhower Elementary School. They did not ask me to read another book, but we weren't reading books. We were reading Langston Hughes poetry. And they, they enjoyed Mother to Son, they enjoyed Dreams. And then we pivoted to the Student Advisory Council at Southwestern Classical Academy. I want to send a shout-out to third-grade teacher, Ms. Childress, and to high-school teacher, Mr. Lejuski, for their great work with children in Flint Community Schools, as well as to Flint Superintendent Jones, ISD Superintendent Tonakliff, and Flint Board President McNeil. I also want to thank OPD, Office of Partnerships Director Gloria Chapman, and Partnership Assistance Liaison Paul Schumer for their work in support of Flint Scholars. Tuesday afternoon, because there's never a dull moment, I joined Ms. Tilly, Dr. Pritchett, Ms. Lipton, and Senator Bullock at Rochester High School for the naming of next year's Michigan Teacher of the Year, Ms. Kelly Guzmanno. As a celebration was last year, Ms. Jackson at Man Learning Community in Detroit for you. The, the celebration at Rochester was raucous and roaring, with students and staff numbering approximately 1,700 in attendance to appreciate the moment. Thanks to Ms. Tilly for participating on the Teacher of the Year Committee, Jen Robel and Shelby Lee for their work on the extensive effort to name the Teacher of the Year. And I want to thank Interim Superintendent Solvery and Principal Wrinkle, truly a wrinkle in time at Rochester High School. And congratulations to Ms. Guzmanno. Wednesday morning, no dull moment, I had the opportunity to tour Searsma Elementary and Grissom Middle School in Warren Consolidated Schools with longtime colleague and superintendent Dr. Bob Livernoway, who will be retiring at the end of the year. Searsma is doing a very strong job with a number of center-based special education programs, and it was a pleasure to watch our special educators in action with students with disabilities in the school. They, they are really magicians in the classroom in many, many different ways. Shout-out to the special education staff and to Ms. Chris Walker for their work. Late in the morning, Dr. Livernoway and I were joined by Ms. Tilly at the Career Prep Center in the district for a tour and lunch. They have 15 separate careers that they support in the Career Prep Center. A highlight of the tour was speaking to students in a future educators class. Shout-out to Ms. Keen for her work with the current students, but future educators in her class, and to the inspiring students who are going to be equally inspiring teachers. They, they were something. I would also thank Ms. Carly McLennithan, principal of the Career Prep Center, who is rightly proud of all the 15 CTE programs in her, in her prep center, from dental to graphics, from building trades to health science, from computer-assisted design to culinary. There was something to eat, food for body, food for thought throughout the center. We need to do more in the area of career and technical education in the state. It is a jewel across the state, but it can be more than it is. We currently serve approximately 110,000 children statewide. But there are career and technical education deserts, that's a shame. There are places that have career and technical education, but in which particular children are nonetheless underrepresented. So I'm talking about the underrepresented, underrepresentation of girls in predominantly boys' programs, and vice versa. The underrepresentation of boys in, in typically girl-dominated fields. The underrepresentation of middle-class kids in particular programs, and the underrepresentation of core and working-class children in particular programs. The ethnic underrepresentation of certain children, the geographic underrepresentation of certain children. There are places in the state whose career and technical education programs are the source of pride, but they are miniature compared to the opportunities that children get across the state. We do really wonderful work in this area. We can do more and better work in this, in this area. After lunch, Karen Carefoot, my executive assistant, and I moved to Chippewa Valley High School, where we were joined by a long, long-time Macomb ISD Superintendent Mike Devault, and students from the International Baccalaureate and Early Middle College Programs in Macomb. Want to give a shout-out to the International Academy of Macomb Principal, Dr. Laura Strong. The kids really pushed me, including one kid who started speaking to me in French. And then, then a kid started in Spanish, and a third kid started in German. It's a little intimidating. Finally, we ended our visits with discussion at Macomb ISD with parents of students in special education center-based programs. This was very, very interesting, engaging, revealing. Superintendent Devault was there, Macomb Special Education Director Justin McCollack was there. Say again?
Mahalik.
Mahalik, thank you very much, Dr. Pritchett. Appreciation to the parents for their strong collaboration with the schools and to Ms. Carefoot for her organizing effort. And then finally, Friday evening, I was in Detroit for the Communities and Schools of Michigan, also known as CIS, Michigan's Leadership and Education Dinner. I want to congratulate the students and staff members who were phenomenal and who were recognized at the dinner. I want to congratulate CIS Board President David Hecker, Executive Director Mallory DePreckle, who have helped drive expansion of CIS's wraparound services for students in school, after school, and during the summer. And a shout-out to the staff at MDE, who are working with CIS to expand CIS's wraparound services in more than a dozen communities in the state. So shout-out to our Office of Financial Management staff and Dr. Golzinski as well. I would be remiss if I didn't mention that since the last state board meeting, I had the privilege of returning to Muskegon Heights Public School Academy, Dr. Pugh, reading to the class of Ms. Davis. They did not ask me to read a second book either. At Martin Luther King Elementary. And speaking with high-school students, I want to shout-out, give a shout-out to both Superintendent Holmes and ISD Superintendent Lenquist. And finally, since the last state board meeting, board, department has contracted with the University of Michigan and Dr. Brian Jacob, founder of the Youth Policy Lab, for an education governance study that was funded last year in the fiscal year '24 budget by the state legislature and signed into law by the governor. There are four broad sets of research questions to this study. How well does the current structure of school districts serve Michigan's children? How well does the current distribution of responsibilities and authority across different levels of educational governance in the state serve Michigan's children? How well does the current education finance system in the state, including both operating budget and capital budget, serve Michigan's children? And finally, how well does the current system of public school choice in the state, including public school enrollment options of charter schools, serve Michigan's children? You notice that a central focus of all elements of the study is what serves children best. I want to thank Dr. Carnell, Dr. Golzinski, and a number of other staff members for their support in, in bringing this grant to fruition. Next item on today's agenda is the presentation by the Michigan Teacher of the Year and Regional Teacher of the Year. We welcome Ms. Candace Jackson, the Michigan Teacher of the Year, third-grade teacher at Man Learning Community Detroit Public Schools Community District. And we also have joining us, Ms. Vanessa Robert, Region Nine Regional Teacher of the Year, kindergarten teacher at Canton Charter Academy, Canton Public Schools. This is an informational presentation, no board action is required, but they are teachers. They could test you at any given moment. Teachers, welcome.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. How is everyone today? Good? Well-fed, hopefully? No food comas, I'm hoping? Hence the reason why you have those little trinkets in front of you. Oh, I don't know. Okay, it's on me, okay. All right, so, thank you for, first and foremost, for having me today. In front of you, you will see Play-Doh and a track train. Often, we use these to help our students refocus and regulate their emotions when they are having their moments. It's small, but it's a mighty tool to distract and remain engaged. At times, I use these during professional developments to help me stay engaged and participate in the presentation. And I even have used it in my leadership opportunities when I have to lead a content conference. And the kindergarten teachers, they love my homemade Play-Doh, so, so, yeah. So I, that's why I brought it, and I hope it serves a purpose today and then for the future. So a little about me, my name is Vanessa Robert, and I am a kindergarten teacher over at Canton Charter Academy. I have served and educated students for 15 years, and it has been an honor to attain such a noble profession that continues to bear fruit for our communities and societies. I'm also a mother of two, as you see. I have a daughter and son. And today is actually my son's sixth birthday. So that is something we celebrated this morning already. He's been counting down the days since February. So we, we have been hearing about it daily, and today it has happened. So I'm eager to celebrate with him later on today with my family. My husband and I, we make it a goal of ours to make sure our, our own children experience a lot of family time and a lot of family fun, but also to help them stay grounded by participating in fundraisers or giving back and participating for organizations to help other children around the world. So that is my son participating in giving and picking out activities and things that they are needed for our children who needed gifts for Christmas time. So it was really nice. The next part. So today, we are focusing on enriching the fieldwork experience with specific focus to special education services, case studies, and English language learners. Our educator programs, oh, sorry, next. Sorry, that's okay. Oh, wait, no, wait, is it back? I'm still trying, I'm, I'm going through this motion, yeah, I think so, okay. Our educator programs statewide have tailored their courses to match the demand of each grade band. It is amazing to see how much these programs have evolved to better prepare our teachers and most importantly, benefit our students. One skill I find to be a challenge for some of our new staff is serving a wide spectrum of student needs and documenting the accommodations that come with those needs. So I believe with more experiences and a variety of fieldwork with our student teachers, will help them be more prepared and be successful in running a classroom. So, with all of us working effortlessly to make sure that there is an equitable education statewide, I am advocating that there be a diverse clinical experience. So then that way, our students are not battling the inequities of education, and they don't fall short. Okay. So with that being said, I think that having a wealth of knowledge and experience from different classroom settings, like stated earlier, with urban, suburban, and rural communities, it can only broaden the perspective and capacity in which teachers need to classroom, I'm sorry, for classroom management, teaching styles, craft, and stamina. Too often, our teachers are burnt out trying to be the savior rather than the creator. Change what can be changed and support where students need us most, which is providing stability, range, and flexibility in their learning environment. So here you will see data from our Educator Workforce Report from 2022. You can see that there is a high percentage across the board with statewide preparation, which aligns with what was stated earlier about the educational programs in our colleges. However, in analyzing the data and looking at the trends, like as, if, as I do with all my student data in my classroom, I was looking at what are some areas that could help, or that we could help. And meeting student needs was at 88%, and instructional strategies and assessment was at 87%. So I looked more into the data, I think that's next. Oh, okay. I looked more into the data, which is the next part. And the cooperating teacher rated a beginning teacher entering the profession in adopting instruction, curriculum, and assessments according to the IEPs, or Individualized Educational Plans, and 504 plans at 77.8%. So that is the amount of exposure that they are getting or able to do. And I also noticed another trend of applying instructional strategies and resources to support English language learners at 73%. So seeing these trends can only improve the clinical experience and provide the equitable education we all want for them. Okay, then we can go back. So this is, so the Accommodation Logs Case Studies and Individualized Education Program, or also known as IEP meetings, can be very daunting, very intimidating. Due to the acronyms, as Dr. Pritchett had said earlier, the many acronyms that are out there for the educational realm, working with students with academic needs is one thing. But collecting that data, tracking that data, and making sure that that accommodation is working for them can be, can be a lot. So it is very important that they have those components, and they don't see it as an overwhelming feature in their ju- and they don't see it as an overwhelming feature in their job. And it can be provided as an enriched experience of what they need to do to make sure that their students are successful. So I was looking at the case studies, and so basically, what I'm proposing is that there be a completion of two case studies. One would be a student actually, a student teacher actually documenting accommodations for a student with a disability and completing an accommodation log or tracker and collaborating with their mentor teacher throughout this process, just to ensure and make sure that they are on the right track and they're documenting properly. And this goes along with the accommodation tracker that the district is using. So it's not, you know, a foreign language to them, and they understand and know what acronyms, those acronyms mean, and it doesn't become intimidating to them. And for those who may not know, an accommodation log or tracker for a student who has a disability is a document that serves for them to make sure that the teacher is providing those accommodations in the classroom while they are teaching and while they are learning. And then the teacher in return has to make sure that that accommodation in place has been working for that student, and if not, then they all go back to the drawing board to see what can help them to make sure that they are successful daily. Another part would be a part of a case study to participate in the process of identifying a student with high academic or behavioral needs and providing the tracking, fulfilling the accommodations, filling out the required documents that the district's provided, communicating with the student's family, and being a part of that entire process. And what does that conversation look like between teacher and family? And meeting with the team of special educators to make sure they have the knowledge that they need to make sure that the accommodation set in place is what they're supposed to be doing successfully. With our English language learners, they fall short of the growth due to their struggle with understanding the content language. Being as a student, a while, long time ago, I was an English language learner myself. So I empathize with my students who are learning English, and it's not easy. And there are many, many, as you know, rules that come along with learning English. So this could be due to the lack of exposure with the vocabulary and language acquisition and the language barriers between the parent and the teacher. So how do we approach this? Is by looking at the clinical experience, and a lot of them right now require hours of working with English language learners in small groups and working on the productive language as well as pre-teaching them before they are teaching that whole group lesson. But I think if we had more required professional development sessions to implement those skills and to implement ways in which they can better connect with those English language learners would be effective and would put in a sense of urgency to help make sure that they are not falling short, but they are just as successful as the rest of the students in the classroom. So with that being said, my advocacy is for that diverse clinical experience with especially the special education students and our English language learners. Thank you so much. And I'm sorry if I talked really fast. Very nervous. I should have my train track, and I don't. That's okay.
Would you like some Play-Doh?
No, that's for you, Dr. Rice.
All right, so I don't have anything exciting as bigots to give you, but I can tell you about my trip to Washington, D.C. Two weeks ago, myself and 55 other teachers from the different states and territories, we convened in Washington, D.C. for a celebratory week full of professional development and all of the good things. It was a lot of advocacy, a lot of professional development, and some of the highlights I want to go over with you today. Going to the White House was one of them, but I'll get to that. The first one, one of the very first days we were there, we had Smithsonian Day at the Smithsonian Museum. We met at the Anacostan Museum first, and that's a neighborhood museum, which was pretty unique because it was in the heart of the urban area. It was in an urban neighborhood, a black neighborhood. And all of the programming there was historical and contemporary issues that are facing the urban area. They had a great exhibit on art education in Washington, D.C. That was spiraling in and out right now, and it was truly a great exhibit. The picture of me in the chair or at the teacher desk, it was part of the exhibit. And the Strollin exhibit, it had different artifacts and different works of art about education in Washington, D.C. And I learned so many things about the evolution of education in Washington, D.C., and it was truly transformative. I learned about like the Duke Ellington School and all of the different programming there. And I learned something that was pretty interesting about how schools were not integrated at the same rate as they were elsewhere in the United States because Washington, D.C. was not a state. So when Brown versus Board of Education came about, it didn't apply to Washington, D.C. because they're not a state. So it took a lot longer for them to integrate the schools because there was a loophole. And then when they did integrate the schools, there was white flight. So then they weren't really integrated. So it took a lot longer for the neighborhood schools to actually truly become integrated. After we met at the Anacostan Museum, we had lunch, and we were able to take different tracks. There were 10 museums that were open to us, and I went to the Natural History Museum. And there, we got to look at the evolution of a cellphone. And I know that sounds crazy because like what does a cellphone have to do with natural history? But there are 65 elements that go into making a cellphone. And we got to look at like the evolution of a cellphone because like most of us, we know what it was like to not have a cellphone. I was in college when I got my first cellphone, but our children, they don't know a world without cellphones. We got to dissect a cellphone, break it apart, and then look at the different pieces and see, okay, well, this lens, what element did it start with? And like break it down to its natural form, like, okay, well, where did this glass come from? Where it came from sand and, you know, breaking it down all the way to the element that made it. So that was pretty cool. And we even got to take home a Google cellphone to take back with us so we can do it with our classroom. I don't think I'm going to do it with my third graders just yet, but I thought it was pretty cool. After the day at the Smithsonian, we had our Hill Day and the teacher talk showcases. I was able to go around on Capitol Hill and advocate with the Wisconsin Teacher of the Year for things that are going on back in the trenches back here. I met with Senator Gary Peters. I met with a representative from Rashida Tlaib's office. And we met with a couple of the representatives and senators from Wisconsin, and we basically bled out, you know, our hearts and said, this is what we need. And, you know, to mix reviews, but we were able to build relationships and start the conversations. And hopefully, some of what we said we needed or what we were noticing got through, and maybe we'll see changes. And then when we got home, we had teacher talk showcases. And five of the Teacher of the Years from 2023, so from last year cohort, they came back and they did TED Talks for us, and they talked about their experiences. So that was pretty cool to see people who have gone through what we've gone through and to hear their voices. The next day, we had the very first ever State Teacher of the Year Dinner at the White House, which was pretty cool. Myself and my son, Joseph, I was able to bring a plus one, and I had my son come up on Wednesday night, and then we went together. It was nothing short of amazing, from the fine dining to the live music and just pure opulence of everything. It was an amazing experience for myself and my child. When I first told him, you know, I want you to go to the White House with me, of course, he was like, oh, whatever, Mom, sure, I'll go to the White House. Like it was something that he could do any old day, but when he left, he thought it was pretty cool. The dining hall was very, very intimate. I was sharing with Vanessa over lunch that the president was probably closer than Dr. Rice is to me right now because he was at the very next table, and so was the First Lady. And when he came in, because he flew in from North Carolina, he wasn't there the entire time because he had another meeting. And they told us to all rise, and we stood up. And when he came in, he came right between my son and the lady at the table behind him, and he kind of bumped into my son, and my son was kind of like, did the president just bump into me? It was like, and it was on, you know, on the live feed, my son like staring in the camera with his mouth wide open because, you know, the president just bumped into him. So that was a very cool experience. At the end, he left and said, you know, Mom, thanks for inviting me, that was pretty cool. Again, it was, it was, it was a great experience because it's something that they've never done before. They've never had a State Teacher of the Year Dinner. It's something usually reserved for dignitaries or presidents from other countries. So for us to be invited into the White House and basically to have the run of the place, it was pretty cool to walk around like you belong there. And I don't think it's something that I'll soon forget. We were able to, on the very next day, and I don't have photos of this because I opted to leave early, the next day, we were able to go and explore other museums. I opted to go home because the next day, my son was going to prom. Not Joseph in a photo, but my youngest son, he had to go to prom the next day. So we were able to catch a flight out the next day, and I got home just in time to help him suit up and take pictures and go to senior prom. So that was pretty exciting. Closer to home, I've done a couple of school visits since I visited you last. I got a chance to go visit Lori Richards, who was here last month in Lincoln Consolidated School. In her school, I went to a character development assembly, and I got to see and take home some of the cool ideals that they're doing. I love going to schools because I take them back to my principal and say, you'll never believe what I saw here. Or, you know, I can pull something out of everywhere I go. But the way they ran the program was amazing. And like Dr. Rice, I went to the Spanish Immersion Program in Lincoln Consolidated School. And what blew me away was I went into a kindergarten classroom, and the kindergartners were fluently speaking Spanish. And not only speak in Spanish, but reading in Spanish? Now, these are kindergartners, and I'm thinking about kindergartners that I know that have a hard time reading English and, you know, reading in English. And myself and Lori, we sat down with the little girls, and they, you know, were reading the books to us. And Lori says, you know, I don't know, I don't know if I could read in Spanish that good. And they were like, well, just keep trying, you could do it. And it was the cutest thing ever. And these were five and six years, six-year-olds, so that was very, very cool. And then closer to home, at my own school, gearing up for M-Step, which we know just ended last week. My school, we had something called Saturday School. And so certain students were given invitations to come in for Saturday School. And we tried to give them that extra boost to get them ready for this test. So going over things that they may have forgotten or things they may not have been exposed to, just trying to give them that extra push because we, these were the children that we thought had a shot at passing this test. And we started every session with a breakfast. So my principal had the griddle out, and we were making the pancakes, and the kids got to pick their fresh fruit. And I think it's something that they'll never forget because they actually came to school on Saturday. And I don't know if they came for the food or for learning, but week after week, these, it was probably 20, 25 students, they came in week after week on a Saturday, woke up bright and early, and so did a couple of teachers. And we did Saturday School, and I'm hoping that when we get those preliminary results back, that it shows that the children did a good job. We're done with the M-Step window, we're now doing our iReady testing, and I'm getting ready for Family Game Night next week. Or not, not next week, actually tomorrow. So that's what's going on closer to home, and I think that's it for the two of us.
Ms. Jackson, I know somebody's going to ask you about the White House, but just, so I'm going to leave that, leave that aside for a minute. iReady testing, tell our, tell our board what iReady testing is because they may not all know.
Well, iReady testing is one of the standardized tests that my district uses. I know not all districts may not use it, but it's one of the measures of academic success that we use. And it's an adaptive test, the children get on the computer, they answer questions, and it takes them right to their zone of proximal development, I guess. And if it gets too hard, it takes it down. And from the test, you're able to see just what level the students are. They take it three times a year, they take it at the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, and the end of the year. And when they take it at the beginning of the year, it gives them a growth target. So maybe my growth target and Vanessa's growth target is not going to be the same. Depends on where we start at. But the ideal is if my growth target is to grow 40 points, that is, that might get me from a first grade level to a second grade level, but it doesn't necessarily mean that I'm going to be on grade level. Because if I'm in fourth grade and I started out on a first grade level, growing one grade level for me would be to get to a second grade level. One of the things that we try to get the students to shoot for is their stretch growth. And a stretch growth target is a little bit higher than their one year of academic growth. Because if I grow one grade level every year, I'm never going to get on track if I am three grade levels behind. I'm still going to be three grade levels behind if I just keep meeting that target. So the stretch growth is like a target where after, say if I meet my stretch growth two, three times in a row, then now I'm back on grade level because I've exceeded expectations. And that's where we tell our students to shoot for, you know, shoot for that. You know, if you shoot for the moon, you might fall somewhere, I don't know how the sand goes.
It's a form of, it's a form of benchmark assessment.
Yeah, so exactly. And it's one of the ways that we measure success. We are starting, we started yesterday. Hopefully, they do great. Like I said, it's just one of the measures of success for the students and a way for them to show exactly what they've learned.
Okay, thank you very much. Board members, questions of our teachers of the year?
Moms of the year, too.
Moms.
Super mom.
What's that?
She's a super mom, too.
There's no doubt.
Yeah.
That must have been an interesting conversation about who got to go to the White House and who got to go to McDonald's.
So I was, you know, listening to Vanessa talk about her son's birthday. So I have three boys, and actually, the third son, we went to the White House on his birthday. So that was not a very good conversation when I was so excited about going to the White House, and all he could say is, why did you take Joseph? And it's my birthday, and I'm home, you know, no one's here to go out to dinner with me on my birthday. And that made me feel really bad, and I really wanted to share like the great experience I had. But I'm just like, oh, son, I'm so sorry that I went to Washington, D.C. on your birthday. So, yeah, it was tough. The only one that didn't care was the kid that was going to prom. He, you know, he's a senior, and he's 18, so he was like, yeah, Mom, no. I'm not missing prom for you.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Jackson. Questions of Ms. Robert or Ms. Jackson? Ms. Lipton?
So the, the idea of creating these clinical opportunities for teachers during their preparation, I think is really, really interesting. What can we do to help you, you know, advocate for something like that?
To be honest with you, I, I'm not sure. I'm hoping that by working, you know, closely with the educational department, because I know that they've been working very hard in making sure that the college programs are meeting the needs of our students in the classroom. When I was in college, it didn't, it wasn't anything like how it is now, and it wasn't specific to the grade beyond. So I feel like this is very realistic, and it can be, it can come into fruition because they're in the field experience as it is. So to be able to just have that part of their program would be amazing. So I guess working with the educational system, whoever's running that department, to be able to work through it, yeah.
Thank you for bringing that forward. Thank you for bringing that, that forward. I just think that's a really, really interesting innovative idea.
Thank you, yes. I, I think it's very, um, I, it's, it's difficult to, when you have a lot of students in your classroom and you have students who have, um, who need your time and they need accommodations to be put in place for a new teacher, that can be a lot. And so I think that if the, the documentation of it, um, because they get to work with them daily, but knowing the documentation process that follows through, I think is such a big component. Um, that makes sure that that student is getting what they need, um, at the end of all of it. And knowing how to speak with parents, I think is a huge, because when I started out, I didn't, I mean, I was like, blah, 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 you know, I was blabbering away and, um, because I didn't know what was the right thing to say and the wrong thing to say. And I didn't want to step on anybody's toes. But I, but the more as, um, I observed those conversations between teacher and parent, the better I became. So, yeah. Thank you.
Other, thank you, Ms. Lipton. Other questions, comments, Ms. Tilly?
Thank you for the de-stressors.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you. You're welcome. I hope you have been worked. I like your.
Absolutely.
Yes, she has some artwork. I like it.
Artwork going on over here.
Yeah. You're welcome.
Thank you.
So, so is that the extent of it?
It is. Just wanted to say thank you.
Um, thank you, Ms. Tilly. Anything else for the good of the group? Once, twice, thrice, Ms. Robert, Dr. Harmel, Dr. Harmel raised your, your hand. Dr. Harmel is looking forward to talking with you about clinical experiences. Not to keep you from your son's sixth birthday. Okay, but give her five minutes after the meeting.
Yes, absolutely. We love that.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Uh, teachers of the year, congratulations. Thank you so much. We appreciate you.
Thank you so much. You all have a wonderful day.
You too.
Happy birthday.
Thank you very much. I'll let him know. He'll be so excited.
To board at 2:29, the next item on today's agenda is the state and federal legislative update. We'll now hear from, uh, Dr. Cheryl Kennedy, Legislative Liaison in the Office of Public and Governmental Affairs, along with Bob Wheaton, the Director in the Office of Governmental Affairs of the State and Federal Legislative. Dr. Kennedy, Mr. Wheaton, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. And Ms. Jackson, mommy guilt is real. So just saying. Real.
True.
Take it off.
Bad. Yeah.
All right, Dr. Kennedy, Mr. Wheaton.
Good afternoon, board members. We have a lot to share today. As you're aware, there's a lot going on with the budget right now as, as well as other legislative items. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Kennedy, who knows far more about it than I do.
Thank you. Um, so today, the Senate School Aid Budget is on the agenda to pass the Senate. However, it's not yet passed. We do expect it to pass before the end of the day. All other school aid and MDE budgets passed, um, their chambers last week. Uh, last Thursday, special, the special education interim certificate extension, Senate Bill 518, um, passed the House, um, 107 to zero. And so now that is heading to the governor's office. That's a really good thing. It was going to sunset, um, in July. And so we asked for that extension and it, we actually got it through and in time. Uh, today at the House Education Committee, um, House Bill 5649, um, Gina Lovelace and Cheryl Wilson and myself from MDE provided testimony on a computer science, um, offering, offering requirement. It's not required for graduation. It's not connected to the Michigan merit curriculum. But the bill would require that every school offers at least one computer science offering and that could be a virtual offering. Um, today also in the House Education Committee, the safe storage communication bills, which, um, require schools to communicate the new safe storage laws to, um, parents every year. Uh, those were reported out of committee. That's House Bill 5450 and 5451. Those are the updates since your, um, most recent update in your packet and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Board members, questions, comments, concerns, reflections? Please, Dr. Pritchett.
Thank you. So we expect budget will get to conference committee.
Following CREC. So the CREC, um, the Revenue Estimating Conference is Friday.
Okay.
And the process is that, um, once they establish what the actual revenues are, um, thus far in the year, then the, um, budget chairs receive new, they kind of adjust their numbers, um, of what their targets are. And then we, um, normally soon after that, they announce who's going to be on the conference committee. Traditionally, it's the chairs, committee chairs and state budget office and we will be represented as well. Okay?
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Who's next? Other reflections? Tell us if you could, please. Um, seems to me that there have been, um, four gun safety related measures passed into law in the last 16 months. Could you tell us what those are?
So there's the safe storage law that, um, requires parents to, or anyone with a child in the home, to store their guns safely or they could, um, face criminal prosecution if that gun is used in a, in, you know, harmed someone. Um, then we have the, um, red flag laws, which, um, allow, um, temporarily allow police to remove firearms from someone who could be, um, deemed harmful to themselves or others. And then there's a due process that goes along with that. Um, we've, we believe that that law has already saved a number of lives already this year. It's being used often, um, with good results in the, in the field. Um, and then we have the safe storage laws, um, that require MDHHS to provide us a, the department, um, the safe, the new safe storage law in a way that is, um, we can communicate to schools and that's also in, with translations. And then we will, and then the, um, parallel law to that is to, um, that we will share that document with schools that they would then share with their parent community, um, by October 1st of that year.
Thank you very much. And, um, we have legislative.
Background checks. That's right.
Yeah.
Yes, and so background checks, but I don't know the details of the background checks. Thanks for that.
So, so universal background checks. Okay, uh, number one, safe storage. Number two, red flag. Number three, tax credit for those with gun locks. Number four. And the fifth element, which is in process, it hasn't been passed into law, would require MDHHS to provide information, um, to us. We provided to local school districts to share with, with parents about safe storage. It kind of closes the loop of, well, I didn't know about.
Right.
Um, well, actually, you know, if this, if this next law gets passed, there won't be any excuses about, well, I didn't know about. So those are four and, and a fifth in process around, um, around gun safety. Um, anything that you'd care additionally to share about budget?
I get asked every day by friends and community members and some of you all, some of you all. How's the budget going? Um, I'll just share that, you know, the budget process is a process. So currently we have three very different budgets. We have the executive recommendation. We have the House budget and the Senate budget. Um, all three bring different priorities to the table. Um, and then through the conference process, we will start negotiating and, and, um, being very mindful about, about Boyward Plate language and, and the specifics of, um, those priorities. The really great news is that we've got absolute, true advocates in the governor's office and the House and the Senate when it comes to school, um, financing and making sure that schools are well-funded. So, um, we expect to have a, at the end of the day, it's a negotiation. Negotiations are negotiations, but at the end of the day, we'll end up with a, a strong school budget.
Thank you very much. Anything more for the good of the group?
Um, I, I, I do. Um, just a couple of, of questions because I've not seen it, but others have seen, um, polling around a constitutional amendment. Has that been brought up from the legislature other than maybe something a few months ago that I've seen or in every other?
A constitutional amendment in.
Or I'm sorry, related to the State Board of Education. Thank you. Related to the State Board of Education.
I have not, that has not come across my desk. So that's something that I have not seen on my radar at all.
Okay.
But if you know something, I'm always.
Any other questions besides that?
Um, I think, I think that's it.
Thank you very much. Mr. McMillan, Dr. Pritchett.
What about the raid on the state board's authority and MDE's budget? How is, uh, how is that shaping up in the bu, in the, um, in the budget as far as MYLEAP? And, uh, and what's, uh, what's being transferred or if they're going to take over literacy or what exactly is going on?
So.
Why don't I, why don't I respond to that?
Go ahead.
If I could. So, um, so there really, there really two sets of, of, uh, budget elements to which you refer. There, there are elements that move over as a function of what took place July 11th in the executive order and by extension December 1, when MYLEAP began. Um, and those include, for example, the childcare transfer payments. They're being administered, um, in MYLEAP. Um, they, they, they need the money to administer the, the transfer payments. The other set of budget lines are, are not budget lines. They're hypothetical budget lines. They were in the executive budget recommendation. There are two of them, $155 million element, a $10 million element. They were in a March resolution that the board approved. And, um, uh, those are in neither the House nor the Senate budgets as we currently speak. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, any other, uh, questions, Mr. McMillan?
Uh, no.
Uh, Dr. Pritchett?
Um, I recall at legislative committee meeting, we talked about dyslexia bills. And I've got a date down here of May 22nd. I'm not sure why I wrote that down.
Um, we expect that's when they'll have a hearing on the House Education Committee.
All right. Thank you.
May 21. Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Pritchett. Ms. Snyder?
Do you sense that there's support for those bills?
There is broad support for those bills. There are also a few organizations that do not support those bills. Um, they're, they've all, they're all pretty public about those, those positions, but, um.
Who doesn't and why?
But if I could, it, just, just, uh, just to note that we've been working on this for, for three legislative sessions. For the better part of six years, the legislature has been working on this. And, um, it, it's time to, uh, come to a meeting of the minds about how to support young people who process texts differently. That we do better with them, by them, for them in, um, schools. We can argue about the details, but at some point, we need to pass something into, um.
I'd like to go back to, um, who doesn't and why.
I would rather, I'd, I'd like to be able to.
I think they can express their own opinions.
This is the State Board of Education. I'm a member of it. I just asked our legislative liaison.
When you stay in the room, sometimes you, sometimes you leave. Um, but.
Dr. Rice.
But the reality is.
You are here to lead, not to behave that way. I have just asked the legislative liaison, what organizations do not support the dyslexia bills and why? It is up to her to respond, not you to behave this way.
Okay, the legislative liaison is well aware that public positions of organizations change and.
I'm asking Cheryl, could you please respond?
But I'd be, I would want to be accurate. And so to be accurate, I would, um, be willing to look at the, at the record of publicly stated, um, of positions and, and provide you that record.
So we've been at this for six years. You're aware of the organizations that don't support it, but you have to look at the record right now?
I want to be accurate.
Okay.
The, um, we have had three members of the state board that have been in the state legislature and they well know from their time, as does Dr. Kennedy, who was in the legislature herself, that positions change based on incarnations of ideas. So there were four dyslexia bills in the last legislative session. And those four legislative bills, those four bills have become two bills. And as they morph, different organizations take different positions at different times. We ourselves have had trouble with this concept from time to time. So that you don't understand the complexity and that Dr. Kennedy does a two different thing.
And I'm asking for more information.
We'd be happy to.
So that I do, because that is our responsibility as members of the State Board of Education. And yet we make ourselves useless if we don't ask those questions and don't have answers to them. And you stand between me and us and those answers right now. That's what makes you not a leader.
We, um, publicly supported, uh, these concepts in testimony. Dr. Cornell and the team presented on, uh, these bills. We are working to get them, uh, shaped up and over the finish line. Uh, the reality is, is that every organization isn't on board. And with every change, you get organizations moving, um, a little bit in one direction or another. It's hard to, uh, understand if you've not participated in it, but this is what happens. Organizations support rise and fall. Their, their support rises and falls on the basis of one element or another of a draft, uh, bill.
So please share with us here today, who is not supporting the current bills and why? That is your responsibility.
We'd be happy to share in board brief. Okay?
Where the public can't hear or see it.
Well, you, you, and you, you can, if you would like to, uh, share that, you may share, share that. But board, but, but the board should be aware that not only with our testimony and support of, but other, uh, entities, uh, were opposed to, and they've expressed, uh, concern around. But a lot turns on the specific incarnation. So as we're supportive conceptually, we may work to change the language of a given draft. Anything more for the good of the group? Nope. Okay. Hearing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, board, we're at the, uh, point about, um, resolutions which were added to the agenda. Uh, Dr. Pritchett, if you would do the honors, please.
Certainly. I will read into the record the resolution in honor of Asian Pacific American Heritage Month.
Let's move it first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Details. Um, I'd like to move approval of the resolution in honor of Asian Pacific American Heritage Month.
We have a motion, we have a second by Dr., by Senator Bullock. Dr. Pritchett, back to you to read it into the record.
All right, thank you. Whereas the people of the United States join together each May to pay tribute to the contributions of generations of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders who have enriched the history of the United States. Whereas the history of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders in the United States is closely tied to the story of the United States. Whereas the Asian American and Pacific Islander community is an inherently diverse population composed of more than 45 distinct ethnic, I knew I'd do this.
Mrs. Dees?
Thank you, Senator Bullock. Uh, and more than 100 language dialects. Whereas there are approximately 22 million residents of the United States who identify as Asian and appropriately 1,600,000 residents of the United States who identify as native Hawaiian or other Pacific Islander, making up nearly 7% of the total population of the United States. Whereas the month of May was selected for Asian Pacific American Heritage Month because the first Japanese immigrants arrived in the United States on May 7, 1843. And the first transcontinental railroad was completed on May 10, 1869 with substantial contributions from Chinese immigrants. Whereas Section 102 of the Title 39 United States Code officially designates May as Asian Pacific American Heritage. as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month and calls on the people of the United States to observe the month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Whereas celebrating Asian Pacific American Heritage Month provides the people of Michigan with an opportunity to recognize the achievements, contributions, and history of, and to understand the challenges faced by Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders. Now, therefore be it resolved, the State Board of Education recognizes the significance of Asian Pacific American Heritage Month as an important time to celebrate the significant contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders to the history of the United States, and that Asian American and Pacific Islanders communities enhance the rich diversity of all Michigan schools and celebrate the contributions of these communities to the state and nation.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pritchett. We've read the resolution into the record. Any other reflections on, once, twice, thrice, hearing none? If we could do a roll call vote, please.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lipton, if you would, please move your resolution.
I move a resolution in honor of Jewish American Heritage Month.
Thank you very much. So we have a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Dr. Pritchett. Ms. Lipton, back to you to read it into the record.
Whereas Jewish immigrants to America ever since their first arrival to our shores in the 16th century have played a central role in the creation, growth, freedom, prosperity, and strength of the United States of America. Whereas the biblical and contemporary history of the Jewish people and the enduring values of the Jewish faith were vital sources of inspiration for the founding of the United States, the Civil Rights Movement, America's global leadership in the cause of freedom, America's commitment to social justice, and many of our country's most central tenets. Whereas Jewish citizens of Michigan, having first settled here in 1761, played a central role in supplying the strategic wilderness outpost at Fort Michelamackinac, establishing Fort Detroit, and also by serving in the armed forces of the United States and the Michigan National Guard. Whereas Jewish Americans have made significant contributions to the arts, entertainment, science, and technology, government, business, culinary traditions, and other fields in the United States, Jewish Americans have played an important role in shaping American culture. Whereas for 43 years, every president of the United States has declared a period of time for celebrating the contributions to the United States of the Jewish community's history, heritage, and culture. And since 2006, the month of May has been presidentially declared to be Jewish American Heritage Month, pursuant to a bipartisan resolution of Congress. Now, therefore be it resolved, that the Board of Education of Michigan hereby declares and proclaims May 2024 to be Jewish American Heritage Month for Michigan, and encourages all our citizens to commemorate this occasion by appropriately celebrating the contributions to our country and state of the Jewish community's history, heritage, and culture. We further call upon the Michigan Legislature to commemorate the occasion through appropriate announcements and programming. We further call upon all schools, colleges, and universities in our state to commemorate this occasion through appropriate programming for students. And we further call upon Michigan museums and historical societies to host programs relevant to the occasion.
So we have a motion. We have a second. We've had it read into, the resolution read into the record. Senator Bullock.
Questioning my own knowledge of the history, but I believe it was called Fort Ponchatrain, not Fort Detroit.
Could be. I got this from the Michigan Historical Museum.
My brain is just my brain. It's operating. So, yeah. So I'd like to double-check the correction to make sure it's Fort Ponchatrain versus Fort Detroit for your resolution. Minor stuff, minor stuff.
Shall we move to table it?
No, I won't table it.
Checking on it?
Moving to mandate.
Checking as we speak.
I can't.
Use somebody else to check.
I got it from the-
I think that's what they're doing, the Historical Museum.
Yeah, July 24th, it is established, Fort Ponchatrain, Dole Detroit, which is now Detroit.
Which is now Fort Detroit.
Yeah, so. I don't know. It's probably semantics, so we can leave it there.
Or we could say, in establishing Fort Ponchatrain, which was later named-
Dole Detroit. Yeah, friendly amendment. I would like, I move, Judy, thank you. All right.
So it would just be-
Fort Ponchatrain, Dole Detroit.
Judy, as a second, do you accept as well?
I accept.
There you go. Okay. Anything more for the good of the group?
Thank you.
Thank you both. Thank you all three. Hearing no changes. We have a roll call vote, please.
Bullock?
Absolutely.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Comments by State Board members? Please, Mr. McMillan.
I do hope the Legislative Committee will take up the Oxford Resolution, particularly, I mean, the EOP section. I mean, they're all, as I understand, were helped, parents from Oxford helped write it, especially, you know, providing or trying to get accountability in these kind of instances where needed. So that would be some kind of changes to governmental immunity when negligence or gross negligence is involved. So I do hope that that will occur. The second thing is, since we, and my final thing, since we met last meeting, the Biden administration have handed down rules regarding Title IX. And there's a good article at AEI.org called "Institutionalizing a Lie", dated April 29, by research fellow Max Eden. I just want to read a few of the excerpts here. Earlier this month, the UK's National Health Service released the CAS review, a report that urged Great Britain to pump the brakes on the experimental sterilizing treatments marketed as gender-affirming care. By contrast, earlier this week, the US Department of Education issued its new Title IX regulations, which require public schools to facilitate a school-to-sterilization pipeline. According to the Biden administration, Title IX of the Civil Rights Act now requires schools to treat students who suffer or claim to suffer from gender dysphoria as though they were the opposite sex. As the CAS review argues, this is essentially a medical intervention. If you require teachers and students to treat a girl who thinks she is a boy as though she were a boy, you increase the likelihood that she will persist in that belief. The longer she does, the more likely she is to seek sterilizing hormone treatments and mutilating surgical interventions. This is what Moms for Liberty called grooming back in 2021. At the time, the media compared this reaction to QAnon accusations of elite pedophile rings. But parental rights activists pointed out that the description fit the stated position of major educational organizations like the NEA. And then further down, last weekend, Bill Maher offered liberals another term for this practice: entrapment. Whether you call it entrapment or grooming, the Biden administration is now requiring all American public schools to affirm that children can be born in the wrong body. Starter's a boy who says he's a girl must be granted access to the girl's locker room or bathroom. Because the Biden administration requires no documentation to affirm gender identity, and indeed, because it refuses to define gender identity at all, a boy could identify as a girl fluidly. The federal government protects his right to be a girl only when he enters a girl's bathroom. Later on, talks about the policy of secretly socially transitioning students will spread even further. Currently, more than 10 million students attend schools that will socially transition them without their parents' knowledge or consent. Further down, this regulation will essentially help facilitate the sterilization of gay and autistic children in blue states on a scale that 19th-century eugenicists could only have imagined. And then finally, any parent who enrolls a child in a US public school is now sending them to an institution required to operate on the premise of a fundamental falsehood. And I would just add to this, I was watching "Deprogrammed" with Carrie Lake. It's a podcast I recommend, and she's a former woke, has left the woke ideology, and interviews others who have done the same thing. She was talking about WPATH, the World Professional Association for Transgender Health, and these doctors and medical, quote-unquote, so-called professionals were talking, and she has them, they're Zoom meetings or whatever, and you could see them. And, you know, these doctors are kind of laughing at the idea that these pre-teen and young teen boys can't really give consent for what they're about to experience. And it's a kind of a problem, because these boys are saying, oh, you know, when told that this could sterilize them and probably will, you know, they say things like, "Oh, well, babies are yucky. Why would I ever want to have a baby?" and things like this. So, I mean, it is pretty pathetic what's going on. Some of these so-called professionals are just disgusting. And I really think, and I would encourage schools to push back, certainly in Michigan, and just not follow these regulations that are being handed down by Joe Biden and the left. And again, I would say it's not only the UK. Many other countries in Europe are going back and reevaluating and stopping a lot of this absurdity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. If you could share with us by email that link, that would be great.
Okay.
Other board members? Going once, twice, thrice, hearing and seeing none? Future meetings of the State Board of Education, regular meetings, June 11th and August 13th. There's no regular board meeting in July. Regular board meeting, June 11th. Regular board meeting, August 13th. Work session, May 21st. Are there any topics board members would like to recommend for future board meetings? Please notify Ms. Evans or me. It is 2:59, board. Enjoy the gift of time. Thank you. And staff.